And as, for example, when Officer Rodriguez was at training, we had to have that shift covered. We've got some other situation where someone is going to a training.
Right.
And because we have someone to be covering.
Right.
Uh, but we're, we're just stretched just at the end, but I will turn this to, uh, to council. And for the record, I do wanna state that even, uh, former Chief Solomon stated that we were short, uh, of officers and he had slots for even four reserves. So we actually was, uh, prior to that, uh, January, no, February first, two thousand sixteen, uh, city council meeting. It showed that, uh, we had four reserve officer positions, uh, T M L shows us with two. And, uh, we had one prior to, uh, promoting, uh, Officer Gray. Uh, what's council's pleasure on?
Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate now for you to ask the questions in which? So, uh, do you mind, Officer Eaton? So what, what would be, uh, know that everyone, uh, likes to be differently? Um, so would you continue to, uh, have the officers operating that the shifts in which, uh, they have been transitioned to?
For right now, we have to kinda stay with it in order to try to change anything. It would cause a, uh, more of a havoc than anything. Uh, what's happening now if an officer is going to be absent? Uh, myself, if I'm taking, or we'll split this year, uh, as long as we can, you know, do it without having someone go over the roof. Uh, sixteen hour time frame.
Alright, again, uh, Kate, uh, my next question, Mr. Mayor, uh, what, uh, what led you to making the decision as to, uh, adding Officer Eaton being in charge of the police department?
Uh, Officer Eaton currently is our most senior, uh, officer with former, um, Assistant Chief experience in another location on a regular basis. He was a full-time position.
Yes, sir. Uh, also, where, where are we at on the process of police chief?
Okay, good counsel, I don't want us to get off, okay.
I think that's all relevant to the question.
Yeah, the police chief process was actually interrupted, uh, by council at the last meeting. We had a officer who had driven down from Dallas, uh, who was scheduled to come down and be interviewed by council. And council chose to, I don't know if it's take it off agenda or basically not to vote on it. So I haven't had an opportunity to check back with him to, uh, to see where we are from his standpoint. The others, Ms. Bynum had reached out to the other two of the top three candidates. And I think we're still waiting to hear something back from them, that's where we are.
Uh, so just for the record, uh, we felt like we had more prevalent issues in which our citizens are facing. So we moved to move that to the end of the agenda. And then, uh, due to the fact that our agenda had, uh, ran longer than expected, uh, he had to leave and go back to Dallas. But I give my, the rest of my question.
Yeah, so, uh, last time we talked about this, uh, there was, you put on there for the police chief, there are three applicants. Uh, up to this time, we haven't got any other applications, nor the documents, uh, talking about the three applicants. So I guess when we asked, what was the process, or where we are in process of police chief? How come we haven't begun the first step, which for us to even receive the information of other applicants that want to be, or that got to the process of, uh, interviewing for police chief?
Just for the chief, you mentioned both, regular officers and chief?
No, for police chief.
Just the chief, okay. The police chief applications, they were whittled down by a review committee, which has been the city's process for many years. And we followed that same process, uh, in this instance. And once they were whittled down, were those three forwarded, Ms. Bynum, to council? I don't recall, and, and again, I'm not sure that council's advice putting this personally identified information on applicants. I'm not sure how that was to work. Was it supposed to come into executive session, I think, is what we had decided, council?
On the police chief, I'm not aware of what was decided. That wasn't something I was part of.
But on hiring applications in general with police officers?
Yes, city council has a right to see the personnel files absent any HIPAA or privileged information. So if there's anything that we need to review ahead of time, we can do that.
Okay.
But absent there being anything, they, they do have a right to see all that.
Well, Ms. Bynum, if we haven't, and, and if we haven't, council, I'll take forward with that, with everything that's going on. Let's pull those top three, uh, applications, you know, between tomorrow and the next day, we'll get them, uh, to council. Shouldn't we put them out there like that? You got, I mean, with police officers, council, you got a lot of information on officers that's one way to wire. Is that the same practice, or how should we handle that?
I, I don't know what's in the file. If you'd like us to review it first, that would be one way to do it. Another way would be for them to come in and take a look at it. That would be another way to keep the security.
Okay, so Ms. Bynum, we'll make it available and we'll send it to council for review at the same time. So we'll do that. So make it so you guys can review that, no problem.
Also, what is your time that's expectancy apply? No, when, when did you wanna hear a response back, uh, from those candidates?
The police officer candidates?
No, sir, the police chief candidates.
Oh, police chief candidates. Um, the one that we have heard back from who made arrangements to come down, I mean, we, we heard from him a few weeks ago. And, and he came down.
No, I asked, when, what was the response, what was the estimated time? Uh, I'm pretty sure when a job reaches out to you, you don't have much to say whether or not you would like to come and be interviewed. So what was the time in which you gave them the time to respond, uh, back to your email?
I, I didn't throw a, a deadline on it. I didn't throw a deadline on the process.
Well, Mr. Mayor, uh, uh, as you tend to, uh, place items three and four on the agenda, um, to push the council to, for us to make a decision, uh, time. And time we asked for different documentation for us to speed up the process on getting it. Uh, me personally, um, I feel like we move forward with a, doing a lot of personal things. I think we have to take ourselves out of it and being that, I mean, you, you, you've never, uh, been a police chief or acted as a police chief. I think that's why, in order for our police department to move forward, it'd be safe for us to have a police chief, um, even Officer Eaton possibly that position. But for us to have a police chief, in which he tells us the direction in which he'd like to see our police department go into it, so that way we could effectively get behind our police chief. Because time after time, again, um, I know within my short period of time of being here, uh, we've always supported the police chief, and whoever that has been, even when Officer Ross brought the, uh, the different technologies and different things that we need to move our police department forward, we've supported. So all I'm asking is that, uh, the next time that items three and four, uh, come back on the agenda is that we have a police chief in which, uh, we're gonna support him back and get behind it.
Counselor Williams.
Councilman Jones, I agree, disagree, um, with that aspect of it. Because we just heard, um, Mr. Eaton saying how difficult it's been. They've worked alone, homecoming. Um, and the guys need a break, uh, need their off days, and we're now down to just six. And they're working twelve hour shifts, and if somebody's fixing up a training, then we're stuck. And if somebody gets sick, we're stuck. So I don't think it's fair that we continue to be in this situation. I understand the situation about a chief. I, I totally understand that. But at the same time, it, we still have to protect the citizens and everybody else that lives in this community to make sure we have people that are at work, that are not exhausted, that are not tired. Because an exhausted pe- police officer can be a dead police officer. A tired police officer can be a, a dead police officer. So we can't keep putting the people that have committed their lives to the city of Purgi in jeopardy. So all this is, is to bring on three officers. We can get the information about the chief and, and go over it and set up a date where we can do our interviews for the chief. But I think right now, those three officers or two officers are imperative for this city to be able to function and be safe, especially at, uh, at nighttime and any other times that things are going on. And we can't do that. We're limited.
My, my next question is, so, uh, Officer White doesn't patrol at all. So if, uh, Officer Rodriguez go to police and go to train, Officer White would not be patrolling?
No, so White's, uh, primary duties are the courts and for...
All right, may, may Officer White step into the room? Officer White, for the last two months, have you not been patrolling the city of Purgi?
I've, I'm not on patrol, but I've answered calls as well.
Alright, so it, it goes back to a point, so we hear that Officer White is supposed to be our coach enforcement, which leads to a whole different area and that he doesn't patrol and that he doesn't do this, when we just heard about his, his own mouth that he still patrols and that he still answers the phone calls. And so I know that, how you move, uh, you don't hire, uh, a, a head coach before you hire athletic director. The athletic director come in and he hires the, the, his police officers, his task, his team, and how you move forward. We have several officers leave our department, resign from our department, and different things that that says, which reflects leadership upon us. And so when you hire three officers with our police chief, they have no leader. Who is leading them? Who is guiding them to make these decisions? Yes, we understand that now it's forced to put in our hands for us to make a decision. But it's been the last seven months in which we knew that, uh, before that eight months, in which we knew that, uh, Officer Solomon was leaving us. And so if we had a plan of action moving forward, we had an interim chief for thirty days, which allowed the mayor to bring us, to speed up this process, to at least allow thirty days for him to bring back the process. If the process was gonna be Officer White, he went through, through the tasks and the team, and then it would've been nice for, for us to have that proposal then brought back to us. But I don't think we moved effectively allowing the mayor to make a decision upon who our officers are. And then we go back behind and say, oh, we're gonna hire a police chief and you stuck with this team and task force, which may not be the task force that he, he feels as though who can do the job. And so I move that items three and four be postponed till the mayor brings us a police chief.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded that the items three and four?
Yes, sir.
Items three and four be postponed until the mayor brings back a police chief. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
I'm ready, Ms. Bynum.
Under that, counsel Williams?
Ms. Bynum?
Yes.
Will you please make sure on this number that it is duly documented, that my concern is the same?
Yes.
Thank you.
And in state of mind readiness, um, I just wanna make sure council has the history. Because prior to Chief Johnson coming on, the city went months without a police chief. Prior to Chief Solomon coming on, and I, no, no, hold on. Let's not be rude. No, that, you don't, you don't, the call for the questions is a motion, you haven't recognized for that.
That's not a motion.
Yes, it is. Kennedy Roberts rule.
Call for the question.
And the call for questions is a motion, and he doesn't have the floor, so he is not recognizing that. My unreadiness is stating.
Point of order.
Okay, what's your, what's your point of order?
Call for the question, not a motion.
Okay, I rule that that is untrue.
Okay, so point of order.
No, no, hold on.
And then you go to a vote?
I, no, I, no, I rule on the point of order. Don't you understand what goes on in that?
If I call another point of order, it goes to a vote, right?
I have been, look, you don't, you don't, you don't get to go back there, yes? Let me state my unreadiness. What are, what are you afraid, afraid of?
I'm not afraid of anything.
Then, then be quiet.
It moves the meeting.
Listen, the, I, I rule on points of order.
No, then it goes to a mo- then, then you vote on it.
I rule, and I rule your point of order is not in, in order.
Then the committee can do it. I still turn it.
Listen, if, if you would do me a favor and stop being rude for a moment, you want respect, but you don't wanna give it. Life doesn't work that way.
Mr. Mayor, I just...
Listen, our, our residents have generated...
Or you have to...
What's, what's your, what is your point of order?
By, by the government.
What is your point of order? Do you know how that works? What is it?
Yes, we just, we just, Attorney Griffin just saying that, yeah.
No, your point of order, your point of order can't be Attorney Griffin.
No, she just saying that going by vote. It's the same thing that Councilman Jones said.
You're repeating him, doesn't?
No, we're going through the rule of government.
I would, I would ask that you look up Roberts' order because they don't know it.
I'm pretty sure she knows it. I'm pretty sure she knows it.
It's the stop, it's fortunate, this could be a learning moment for you.
No, no, it's a learning moment for you. A point of order has to be written on. The chair rules on points of order, and you don't even understand that.
And it could be overturned.
By what?
By votes.
Is that Attorney Griffin?
Listen, if our residents are not protected because council wants to hold off on bringing in officers paid for by the taxpayers when you don't pay taxes, you can't relate to that, and the record is clear.
They pay for a chief too.
Yes, they do.
Alright, so point of order.
And you don't even know what your point of order is.
I just told you my point of order.
No, you don't just say point of order, you have to, what is your point?
My point was that I called for the question.
And you didn't have the floor. Call for questions is a motion, but...
It's not a motion.
Listen, we'll, we'll skip that. All in, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose have the same right? Item five, discuss police officer reserve officers. It's been, it's been pointed out a few times that the city doesn't have a reserve program. In speaking with Texas Municipal League Independent Risk Pool as recent as last week, they show we have a reserve program, have had one for years, and that we currently have two part-time reserve slots. They simply deal with the numbers. I had to let them know we have seven officers because they showed us listed with five full-time, T-CO certified, gun-toting officers. So I updated them. But for the record, I just wanted to be clear, Ms. Bynum, that T M L informed us that we do have a reserve part-time officer program. And it's also stated in the February first, two thousand sixteen minutes that we have four reserve positions. So the record is clear, we do have a reserve program, since that's been the issue.
Alright, so, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm glad that you brought back the, uh, police department in the reserve. Uh, as of February two thousand sixteen, uh, myself, Noel Ignate was on council as, as well. Uh, due to the fact that that was underneath, it, does it not matter, Attorney Griffin, who, uh, I guess is in charge of the police department and we're submitting those names, uh, like, how did that work? So if in February we had four, but since I've been elected, we haven't had, actually talked about a reserve, uh, program? Do we have to resubmit, or do we have to resubmit names, or how did that work?
No, if it hasn't been disapproved since the time it was approved, it carries over from a prior council.
Alright, so, uh, due to the fact that, um, as we just talked about, uh, public safety and things that such, when do the reserve officers come into play?
When they're hired, they come into play.
Only when they're hired?
What do you mean, when?
So a reserve officer doesn't, it just like you have officers in the chamber for when you either fire or a officer is dismissed from the police department, that's the only time that a reserve officer can be used?
No, a reserve officer, as long as they're licensed, can be appointed by the administrative chief of the department, who is currently the mayor, as long as he doesn't go over the budget. And if they're unpaid, he doesn't go over that budget. The other budget that comes in is the T M L I R P risk pool, which is why we were having them checked with T M L to see whether or not they were insured. So as far as, as, is there a program that's up to the administrative chief of the department or separate in your city charter than other departments?
Alright, so then, so tha- thank you for that because, so when you said, Mr. Mayor, you said that they can't be used to hire for, uh...
They can't be used to hire? What are you talking about?
You said that a reserve officer cannot be, they only come into play when they're hired, that you just say?
Well, if they're not on board, how can they come into play?
Okay, so let me finish my statement. As she just said, if you submit a program or, or they don't go over the amount of officers, uh, the amount of hours in which our budget is allocated or then they can be used. Because Officer Gray was a reserve officer before last week, and he was on duty. And you also said that he was unpaid. And so due to the fact that we just talked about safety, what is your game plan and your initiative moving forward with how we use the reserve officers? Are you gonna ask to, to budget money for part-time officers to use the reserve officers? Do you already have a certain number of reserve officers in which you're gonna submit and list? What, what is your plan of action, uh, for the reserve officers? Even though we, we have had a plan previously and being that this is something which you wanna be moving forward, how do you plan, what is your plan of action for the reserve officers due to the fact in which, as you stated and we all just stated, that we are short of officers?
We had a plan previously. The city has hired reserve officers over the years. That's not a plan, that's what they are able to do. And when it's a reserve unpaid officer, as council just told you not five minutes ago, it doesn't impact much. So there's nothing to have a plan about, counsel Williams.
Uh, Mr. Eaton, uh, can you get up to enlighten us on how reserve officers don't run on board?
Okay, a reserve officer is basically just that, it supplements the paid officers for the, uh, department, for any department. And when, when I say supplement, they come in and work, uh, the state requires a reserve officer to work at least thirty-two hours a month. So therefore, if the, uh, reserve officer come in, work eight-hour shifts once a week, then they cover a share for another officer or supplement with that officer.
And so going back to my...
Hold, hold on. Don't have the floor, you keep speaking out there.
She said, you said you can't, yeah.
You don't pay.
Yeah, I know, but it was a change of question.
Done?
Thank you.
Counselor?
Alright, so he just stated, uh, Officer Eaton just stated that a reserve officer could work up to, I mean, I was just saying...
Thirty-two hours a month.
Thirty-two hours a month. And so, uh, are you, when you say police department reserve officers, are you submitting as a li- a list of names in which are gonna be the reserve officers?
No, not.
Are you gonna submit a solicited names to be reserve officers?
No.
So, uh, so I, I like that you just said no on both of those previous questions because when we talked about items three and four, we talked about how bad our police department needs help and are gonna go into, uh, officers are going to train it and things that such. But when we just talked about that we could implement a plan of action for either part-time officers, uh, reserve officers, you stated that you're not gonna implement that plan of action or submit names to us for part-time, for reserve officers?
Okay, Councilman Jones, I have a question for you. Where do reserve officers come from, if you know?
She just said.
No, no.
You act, that's the chief, you act that way.
No, no, where do they come from? Not my role. Where do they come from for me to even act on it? Where do they come from?
Mr. Mayor.
No, I'm asking a question, it's a legitimate question.
I just asked you three questions, and you didn't answer neither one of my questions.
Reserve officers are people who want you to hold their license, that they have an opportunity to work part-time at, at no cost because maybe they have another job as a non-police officer. We have three officers who are not interested in reserve, who are ready, willing, and we have the money to come on, and you want to hack with me about reserve officers who don't wanna volunteer? Hold, hold up, ma'am, no, no talking. See, we, we have officers who want to work and get paid. That's what people do as a profession. Reserve officers are folks who want you to hold their permission, like the constable has over thirty reserve officers, and he's the only unpaid person, but those officers are doing it for a reason. We don't have a line of people in here talking about, I wanna volunteer for the city of Purgi as a police officer, put my life on the line.
Alright, so, Mr. Mayor, are you gonna go outside? See, this the problem, the process have worked, has worked backwards. And so now we have officers within here that are, that, that are angry and, and at me, myself, or council members due to the fact that the process didn't go, in which the process has been working time after time again. And so you have already made pre-planned promises before today's meeting. And so the officers come time after time to the meeting to get upset with us when are we asking for a chain of command and action, a plan to move forward? Okay, we've been short officers at one point in time. At one point in time, we was fully staffed and we had seven officers. And then, and then now we come back and we're not fully staffed, but then you went out and you hired officers. Well, you told officers that they were gonna be hired when it came around. So we asked time after time for a police chief. You not bringing back a police chief, but time after time you brought back officers because you made promises to those officers, and now those officers are, are mad at us. When I'm asking, okay, we short, besides the three officers that are within the room, are you gonna bring us a plan of action or, matter of fact, Officer Eaton, could you please, in the past, I know when we first came on board, we had, uh, a shift of part-time officers, and even before that, I guess we had reserve officers. In order for our police department for growth and anything within the city, we lack at planning. So we don't have a strategic plan, we don't have a cohesive plan, we don't have a police department plan. We need planning in order to move our city forward. We know that our city is gonna continue to grow, so year after year, we have to plan. And so I don't know how long you're gonna be in this role or that you're gonna be out of this role, but can you please bring us as a plan, being that you are the lead officer? And the way that our police department should be driven and going forward because time after time, we come to city council meetings and we don't have a plan of action. And so that's how we continue to run in circles instead of following the chain of command and the chains of command.
Well, let's, let's speak to the chain of command. You, as a councilman, do not direct city employees on what to do. Officer Eagleson will not be bringing you a plan.
I didn't know. I asked him if he could. We can ask if he wants to do anything.
You don't, not to prepare a plan, that's a job function. Counselor Williams.
Jones, I love you to death, but you stated that you need a police chief, right? You said we need a chief, chief, police chief in order to hire officers.
No, I said we, we've asked him to bring us.
But, but you said we, we want the chief to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
But then he turned around and asked the mayor, what is his plan with the reserves? That's a chief job too. But if you're gonna trust him to bring you some reserves, then why you can't trust us?
No, so...
That's he, wait a minute, what's I'm asking? Why you can't trust the three of us that sit here to make a choice to bring our police officers without a chief being in place?
Alright, so those questions were flipped the other way. I asked him, is his plan for the reserve, since he had the reserves on the agenda? Before that, I asked, what was his plan for chief, for us to have a chief? It seems like he doesn't have a plan for neither one of them. So we, we, we're stuck at a stance that he put the reserve officers on here, so I'm thinking that we're gonna have a plan of action, how we're gonna move forward with reserve officers? We don't have a plan, we just are talking about our reserve officer or what's a thing in two thousand sixteen before I was elected? We asked how we, could we move forward with police chief? We don't have a plan for how we're gonna move forward with police chief. So those questions were, were flipped the other way, and so...
Here, what is number five about?
Number five is the fact that Councilman Roland, on several occasions, informed his fellow council members that we don't have a reserve program at all. Now I'm asked about putting together a plan for reserves. This is to inform council of what you were misinformed about just two weeks ago. We do have a reserve program. I'm not saying I'm qualified to bring the officers. I'm letting council know, which is my duty by charter, to let you know what's going on in the city. We have a reserve program, you just told we didn't have one. So I'm not here trying to implement one, I'm letting you know one exists.
Mr. Engle, Officer, I'm sorry, Officer Eaton. You have, uh, any knowledge of any reserve officers that would be willing to come to the city of Purgi?
Uh, yes, we can definitely get that.
Anything else on item six, Council Wallace?
And I wanted to just mention that a lot of the branches of these issues come from origin in which once Chief Solomon left, remember that when Chief Solomon was here, we almost, did we have full staff?
Yeah, we, we said we have.
Yeah, full staff, right? Then we lost a lot of people, meaning that it is important of who is in our police department. And so what we asked a long time ago is while we're still searching for a police chief, have an interim chief. In the meantime, we never got the interim chief. Then we were like, okay, well then let's get the police chief. It, this has been months. This is not something that just happened at this agenda. This has been months and months and months, so it puts us in a, it puts us in a peculiar position because it looks like we're pushing things back when we're not. Because the role as administrator of the city, he should be searching out and giving us those names for the police chief because if we have a police chief, all these things, we will be directing to the police chief to come bring us back this information so that it doesn't seem like we're always on the mayor. So this is a slew of issues that come off of origin that just hasn't been addressed, which is when we get in the police chief and when the interim chief coming? And like I said, this has happened with... And like I said, this has happened with engineer, this happened with attorney, thi- this is not something new within the city. Whenever we need something right then and there that we know is pressing, and we ask for that, for that position that we fill, it takes a long treasurer. Like thi- like this is a pattern of problems.
Well, let me, let me say this, councilman. You say we didn't have a plan for interim chief, and after thirty days, you, Jones, and Roland led the charge to cancel Officer Ross being the interim chief. So don't sit here and tell me we didn't have one, because everybody out here knows. Be quiet, look, listen, can you just be quiet? You don't have the floor. Police chief, we had one for you to interview two weeks ago. So when you asked for a plan, you had the gentleman here on agenda, and you selectively chose. So don't say when you didn't have one, it was in front of you, you chose not to act off. So don't blame us for your inexperience and lack of understanding. Councilman Williams. Councilman Williams.
Okay, I think it's very important for us to continue to be professional and be respectful of each other, but also, um, when people come and they come to our city council meetings, and then they turn around and watch our city council meetings on YouTube, we're freaking jealous. And so we have people come here that are sitting there...
Listen, listen, please, folks, I, I know that's a little bit, please work with us.
They think about being a glory in the city of Purdue in any capacity, they change their minds, because we don't know how to conduct ourselves, and we do not know how to act, and we do not know how to be respectful to other people. When that chief came all the way from Dallas last week, we should have immediately interviewed him and let him and his family go on, on their way. We did not do that. We held him here until he got fed up with the monkey show, and he decided to leave and go back home. So a lot of reasons why we put things in the paper for jobs that people do not apply for is because of us. Not because of anything else, but because of us.
All right, uh, I'll...
Hold on, did you want the floor, councilman?
Yes, sir, please, thank you. Uh, me, any decision I make, I feel like I stand strong upon. I think it's unfair to students, uh, that's been asking for several reports for months at a time, and for us to keep, continue to push that back time after time again, to they just say, oh, your problem or your issue is not as important, or something they wish they've been facing for time after time again, due to the fact...
Look, hold on. Officers, can you make sure we have some order in this open meeting, where there's not supposed to be any conk in the thing? If someone speaks up, please, Officer Ingleton, you in the front, remove him.
So, so my whole issue, and why I chose to, chose to make that motion is because ninety days before that, we've been asking for a report upon Penta Hill time after time again, which it seems like our student continues to be in that crisis. And so I thought it was unfair for us to push that on...
Hold, hold on, hold on, councilman, you're off agenda. Where are you at?
Yes, sir.
No, 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 you're off agenda. What's going on, item six, Ms. Collins?
I moved it, we moved item five.
Okay, item six, you want to speak before I?
Uh, well, I guess it would be more appropriate to allow you...